The roll, please.
Chairman Najah.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Jabar.
Present.
Commissioner Javid.
Here.
Commissioner Linton is absent. Commissioner Macon absent. Commissioner Noyola.
Here.
Commissioner Pate.
Here.
And Commissioner Parisi absent.
Ms. Linda K. McCain is not here. Macon is not here now, but I want to thank her for chairing the last meeting. Unfortunately, I had to be out of town. With that said, you have all received the copy of the minutes of the last meeting. I would entertain the motion to accept them in the records.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. If you would, for those of you who are visitors, please make sure that you put your phone on silence and we get started. Mr. Boone.
Yes, sir. The first item on the regular agenda is PZ twenty twenty-two, one fifty-two, and it's a request for an abandonment of the alleyway in block fifty-seven of the Van Warmer addition. The applicants, Mr. Databoy, Pawan Kumar, and Ahmed Vaid, are requesting the abandonment of a portion of Crockett Street located between Main and Pearl Streets. The applicants own the proposed Beaumont Recycling Center at five sixty-five Orange Street and have purchased the property on both sides of an existing twenty-foot alleyway. It should be noted that there is a sanitary sewer line crossing the east end of the alley. And should also mention that a specific use permit will be required for the recycling center in question prior to any construction permits being issued or the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And you can see before you, the alleyway is outlined in red extending, parallel there with Fannin Street. And staff is recommending approval of this request with the retention of the easement for the sewer line, subject to the following condition. If approved, applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title commitment for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Appraisal and title commitment must be submitted to the planning office along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on the city council's agenda. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. Do you have, if you would, state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Hussein. I work with Port Arthur Recycling. We have obtained this property for, to build recycling center and a transfer station of recyclables. And as it is, the property is divided by easement in this center. And to be able to completely build out the recycling center, we want to be able to use entire property as a whole. And that is the reason for this application.
You understand that you're still going to be given a re-easement for the sewer line and you can't build on that thing?
Yes, the east sewer line, I believe, is a small portion on the port end of property, which will be okay.
Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't go through in the alley, Chris?
I'm sorry?
The sewer line does not go in through the alley?
It's not within, it's, I believe it crosses the eastern part of the alleyway.
Okay.
The western part, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Small portion.
Small portion.
Great. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We have heard from the staff and also the applicant, and I would entertain the motion.
A motion to approve with the one condition?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone.
Okay, the second item is PZ twenty twenty-two, one six zero, and it's a request for an abandonment of a portion of Park Street between Mylum and Gilbert Streets. The applicant, applicant in this case, is the city of Beaumont on behalf of the Transit Department. And we are requesting the abandonment of a portion of Park Street between Mylum and Gilbert. This portion of Park Street is adjacent to the current city bus parking lot. As a result of a scheduled vehicle replacement, the fleet of buses have outgrown the available parking space within the facility, and we are looking for additional room to use. Due to the existing water and sanitary sewer lines in this portion of Park Street, a utility easement will be needed to maintain, be maintained within the right-of-way. No permanent structures should be built within the utility easement. In addition, fire hydrant access will be needed to be accessible for maintenance purposes. You can see the slide before you outlined in red. If you're familiar, this is the rail underpass leading between College and Mylum, and this is essentially a kind of leftover street from the past. And let me see, this is a, a better overview of this portion. And based on that, with the retention of the easement, staff is recommending approval of this abandonment. With that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions? Is there anybody else in the city that would like to add any information to it, or not?
We would be the applicant, so we're here to answer questions if you have it.
Okay, you want to get up and state your name and address?
Sure. Christopher, Christopher Boone, city of Beaumont.
We heard from the applicant, and you have the pictures and the document in front of you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Yes, sir.
One six two.
Final item on the regular agenda is PZ twenty twenty-two, one six two. It's to consider a request for preliminary plat approval of Greystone subdivision, Phase One Beaumont-Jersey County, Texas. Alberto Elefano of Fitzton Shipman, Inc. has requested preliminary plat approval of Greystone subdivision Phase One. This eight-point-five-zero-four-five acre development consists of thirty-one residential lots in an RS residential, single-family dwelling district. The proposed collector street, streets of Oak Crest Drive and Maple Grove Drive are proposed to have sixty-foot-wide rights-of-way and thirty-seven feet of pavement back-to-back of curb. All lots will access West Calder Road and meet the requirements for residential lots of the city zoning ordinance. Water and sewer will be provided by an extension of the city's facilities. And let me go ahead and show the, this is the outline of the proposed subdivision. Again, this is Phase One. You can see West Calder is there, running north-south to the east. And I think we passed out a paper copy of this plat because it is difficult to read at this scale, but you'll, you'll see, either on the screen or on paper, you'll see this is Phase One of the preliminary subdivision, which does extend all the way from Felix over to Jones. And you see, and the fainter lines are the future phases. And I should mention, again, in review of the preliminary plat, we do have a couple of engineering comments. One is that the streetlight layout does need to be revised according to the subdivision regulations. Streetlights shall be installed at all intersections and at additional locations not less than two-hundred feet apart. Locations shall be designated so as to provide an average separation of approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So we wanted to add that comment. In addition, not in your, not in your staff memorandum, but our water utilities engineers, they did request that we also condition this preliminary plat approval with a condition of the design of final water and sewer utilities to be approved by city engineering. Additional comments, which are in your staff memorandum, the first being revise streetlight layout to meet ordinance requirements. Number two is that future phases of Greystone will be limited until Jones Street is improved to city standards. That's the street to the north, which you can see in the, again, the future phases. This would, this would connect to Jones Street. So we would need that improved before that happened. And then finally, a little bit of change to this condition. Additional right-of-way must be dedicated along, not Felix Street, but West Calder to allow a sixty-foot-wide collector street or limit future development to the west. So what this is referring to is that in the subdivision regulations, whenever a subdivision is proposed adjacent to an arterial street, we do require that additional land is dedicated to bring it up to standard. In this case, West Calder is currently fifty-five feet, and the minimum standard will be sixty feet. So we are asking for a dedication of an additional, additional two-and-a-half feet along West Calder for this subdivision. Again, you've got the plat before you. With that, are there any questions of staff? I do believe the applicant is in the audience.
At this point, there's only one means of egress out of this subdivision?
Correct, and that's, so condition number two says that future phases of Greystone will be limited. So, given the fact that currently there is only one point of access, which is off West Calder, until there can either be improvements, well, I guess Jones Street would be the, would be the next available option, but they really need an additional, additional access point before future, future units and future lots can be recorded.
All right. Any questions for Chris? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
If you would state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have.
My name is Alberto Elefonio. I'm from Fisher Shipman, and we are at fourteen oh five Cornerstone Court in Beaumont, Texas. And I, do you want to have a little bit of clarification from the comments? The original comment was for Felix Street for the additional right-of-way? Is that still part of the condition?
No, so the original comment was referring to Felix. There is a section of the subdivision regulations which calls for, you know, the provision of rights-of-way utilities to provide for future improvements. However, the fact that Felix is actually not on the major street plan, we are not calling for that. However, West Calder is on the major street plan and is shown as an arterial, and so as such, we are requesting the additional right-of-way along West Calder.
You understand that?
Yes, sir. And we're in agreement with the first comment, which was the streetlights per the ordinance, and we will revise those. And also, we understand that right now we are limited to this thirty-one lots until we get another, another access road for the subdivision to Jones.
And then you understand the third one, and the fourth one is the water and sewer to be approved by the city engineering?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Tell me, there is a proposed drainage ditch that shows in here along Maple Grove. What's going to happen to that ditch when you improve the rest of the property?
That will be covered up. It will have actual pipes along there. Right now, in this phase, in Phase One, it will be temporary ditch to those, to that detention pond for the time being.
Okay. Good, thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? Perfect, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We've heard from the applicant, and he does understand the three existing conditions and the additional condition of the sewer and water engineering to be submitted. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with all conditions?
We have a motion to approve with the four conditions. Number three would change to from Felix to West Calder. Yes, ma'am. So we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Great. We have another one. Mr. Boone?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the three items on the regular meeting.
On the regular meeting, great. Madam Mayor, for all yours.
Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel. Councilmember Feldshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Getz. And Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining the joint public hearing between the planning commission and Beaumont City Council. I would like to say that today is the only opportunity that you will have to present your case to the joint commissions. So make sure that you state all the information that you need to say today because within the next two weeks, it will go to a vote for the city council to approve what the planning commission has brought today. But thank you for your attendance.
Thank you, ma'am. We get started with PZ two zero two-two, one three one.
Yes, sir. The first item on the joint meeting is PZ twenty twenty-two, one thirty-one. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a home daycare in an RS residential, single-family district at the property at twelve twenty-five Glendale. Mary Delaney is requesting a specific use permit to allow home daycare at this location. She plans to keep up to twelve children, ranging from six weeks old up to thirteen years old. The house where Ms. Delaney wishes to operate her licensed childcare home is the parsonage located behind the Gospel Tabernacle, Tabernacle, rather, church. Due to the location behind the church, parking is not an issue for the proposed use. Hours of operation will be from seven-thirty a.m. to five-thirty p.m., Monday through Friday. Let me go ahead and show you, this is the outline of the property in red. You can see here is the site plan showing the, the church with the parking lot facing Glendale, and you can see the parsonage house in the rear here. This is a view of the subject property. You'll see the house there. Also a view of the subject property from Glendale. View to the north. View to the west. View to the south. And we did mail out twenty-four notices regarding this application. We received one in favor and zero in opposition. Based on the application, staff is recommending approval of this item, subject to the following conditions, or condition. Number one, must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow and/or pretreatment programs. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Any fencing requirements, Chris?
No, this is, it is, of course, let me go to the zoning map. It is shown as, you know, it is surrounded by single-family residential, but we typically don't, we don't treat churches and, and home daycare, or daycares, rather, as commercial. So no fencing would be required.
I was just thinking of security being a daycare. That's, that's why. But I guess there's nothing in ordinance for that, right?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is this fencing, does it go up to the house on this picture right here?
I think this goes up between the parsonage and the church. Yeah, it's, it looks to be maybe what, four or five feet tall?
There's a six, it looks to be a six-foot fence behind.
Okay, so maybe a privacy fence behind.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, sir. Is the applicant in the audience? Yeah. Good afternoon. How are you, ma'am?
Wonderful, thank you.
If you please state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you with any additional comments you might have.
I'm Mary Delaney at twelve twenty-five Glendale. And as for the fencing for the security of the little ones, there is a privacy fence about six, eight feet behind the fencing that we still see there. And also, we're also put up another fence up to four feet for the playground area that's going to cover from the exit of the home straight into the play area.
Perfect, okay. And you do understand the comment about the water utility approval of the backflow preventer and the pretreatment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you mind just telling us what is it that you're about to do and how you're going to do it?
Yes, sir. I wish to open a home licensed daycare, which is going to allow me to care for twelve, up to, up to twelve kids from the ages of six weeks to thirteen years old. And within that, I do plan on orienting faith-based and childcare at the same there and making certain that we can create a wonderful foundation for all little ones. That's what my goal is.
And is this something you're just getting into, or you've done it before?
I've done it before, when, I understand, I've done it for four years, for about four years back in two thousand thirteen. When I moved to this residence, my home then was a much larger home, and I didn't think, until I went ahead and started making reservations, that I could do it here. So I did stop for a few years, and it just allowed, placed it back on my heart to go ahead and try to go forward once again.
Perfect. And is this going to be affiliated with the church?
No, sir. This is personal.
Okay. Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
With no comment from the commission members, I would ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? The gentleman in the back. Good afternoon, sir.
Thanks, Mark. The on eleven ninety Amelia Street. I'm right to the back of that property. And I was understanding that you said there was one in favor and none in opposed, correct?
Correct. We haven't received any opposed yet.
I sent my letter in today opposing it.
Okay, well, you're here, so we would love to hear from you.
Okay, and that's, really my big thing is just that it's been single-family dwelling houses, and I don't know why they couldn't do this at another commercial property somewhere.
All right.
Because I'm retired, and I would say my property backs up too there. And I'm just kind of concerned about that because it's having, you know, come, come up with a specific use permit.
Okay, and your, your objection is the noise, or?
Yeah, you know, with twelve kids, you know? Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard. Ms. Delaney, you had one person opposing the, the case. Do you have anything that you want to add or any comment? We'd love to hear from you if, if you can do anything to, to ease the gentleman's concern.
Most definitely would. I do understand the retirement and the quietness that we look for in within retirement. I have sixteen grandbabies, and they're always there. So if it hadn't been to where that you had any complaints again, you won't have any because they're going to be so much smaller kids at that, you know, so.
So you already had sixteen kids trying this property?
Oh, yes, many. And then we have all the church activities there as well.
All right.
So with all our youth.
Well, but you are going to do something to make sure that there's no disturbance to the neighbors, right?
Oh, definitely. You saw some little ones there, and I can't see for them being that noisy, and we're not planning on doing no extracurricular things to cause.
You want to be a good neighbor?
Yes, sir.
Well, by ordinance, they, this is allowed, so I'm not sure that there's anything we can do other than begging you for being considerate of your neighbors.
Yes, sir, certainly.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask Ms. Delaney if, is there a privacy fence, do you know, behind the house?
Yes, sir, there's a privacy fence that's coming from the Amelia area. There was a, a chain gate, but also there's a privacy fence as well. And I think it's maybe six to eight feet.
So six to eight feet wooden behind the parsonage?
Yes, directly behind the parsonage.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Hearing none, we're going to close the public hearing. And we heard from the applicant, we heard from the neighbors and the staff, and I would ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, final PZ two thousand twenty-two dash one thirty-one.
I second.
With the?
With the conditions.
And your second includes the condition? All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Good luck to you, ma'am. Mr. Boone, one four zero.
Yes, sir. The next item is PZ twenty twenty-two, one four zero. Gerald Farah, on behalf of B&amp;L International LLC, is requesting a zone change for the forty acres of land located south of Cardinal Drive and west of the city sewage treatment plant. Mr. Farah would like to rezone the property from PUD, or Planned Unit Development zoning, to LI, Light Industrial zoning. B&amp;L International LLC has plans for an industrial development at this location and currently owns the one hundred and eighty acres of land in the area. All of the surrounding land is already zoned Light Industrial, or LI, and is currently vacant. And let me go ahead and show the outline of the property here, shown in red. And again, undeveloped, but you see is, is surrounded by RS, single-family to the south, which is largely undeveloped and, I think, fairly inaccessible, the rest being Light Industrial. We did send out eight notices to surrounding property owners. We've received two in favor and zero in opposition. Based on this application, staff is recommending approval of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Mr. Farah, good afternoon. How have you been? I see you walking in front of my office every day, kind of making me jealous. Do you have any addition, if you would, state your name and address for the record, please?
Gerald Farah, nine ninety, Twenty-Second Street, Beaumont, Texas. I don't know, before my participation in this, I don't know why it was ever a PUD. Chris could probably help me out. I think at one time, someone was going to build a
Yeah, there was.
multi-use subdivision, and why anybody would do that right there, I have no idea. But anyway, it is what it is. I don't know why the city might want to change theirs also. But this property is under contract for a development that is in, will be under the jurisdiction of the Light Industrial, and we just need the PUD taken away. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
And the, the owners have other properties around this, or somewhere else?
I don't believe, no. It's a hundred and eighty acres. We've sold off probably eighteen to twenty acres on the, on the front. They've put a, a road, which you can probably see from one twenty-four, to this property. It's in compliance with, with the county, and anything they're going to be doing is, is, you know, going to be subject to your Light Industrial, you know, classification. I, I'm, I'm under a nondisclosure to it as far, but it will be, you know, it will be but it will be, you know, it will be vetted through y'all under the Light Industrial.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? All right. And let's see. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? We closed the public hearing. We heard from the applicant and also the staff, and I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone, 159 and the last one. And I would tell you, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
We can go home before 6 o'clock.
Right. Okay. File PZ 2022-159 is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow an automotive paint and body shop in the GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, at 4145 College. Brandon Edmonds is requesting a specific use permit to allow the paint and body shop at this location. Caliber Collision has facilities nationwide. The hours of operation are proposed to be Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And the facility is expected to have between 10 and 15 employees. And let me go ahead and show you the slides. This is the location outlined in red. You'll know it's just west of I-10 and on College Street, there by the drainage canal. This is the proposed site plan of the facility. Another aerial shot of the location. Photograph of the subject property. This is a view to the north. The northwest. To the west. And to the south. And here's looking east across the canal towards I-10. And we did mail out 10 notification letters. We've received one in favor, zero in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of this application subject to the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow and/or pre-treatment programs. And then two, install a five-foot wide sidewalk along College Street. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Mr. Edmonds? Good afternoon, sir. Would you state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have?
Yes, sir. Brandon Edmonds, I'm half the National Property Holdings by way of Houston, so just down the road. And I think Chris hit the nail on the head there, pretty cut and dry in terms of what we're looking to do. We're a preferred developer on behalf of Caliber, and we've done probably 10 or 12 developments for them across the country, Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas, and a few other opportunities. And we're excited about bringing new business to Waco if you have an opportunity to get this SUP passed.
To Beaumont?
Having to answer any questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. We're in Beaumont. I'm thinking about wanting to, I'm under construction on right now.
Several projects.
I've got, yeah. My apologies. My apologies.
Great. Any questions for the gentleman? You do understand the two conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Perfect. If there are no questions, thank you very much, sir.
You got it. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, Mr. Pariji.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Pariji, and my office is at 445 North 14th Street here in Beaumont. We've owned this property for some time now. We bought it from before closure at the bank that was going to put a used car lot there. We tore the building down because it was just horrible to look at. And we've had it, and we've had numerous people come to us and want to do something with it. And we weren't happy with, we had a hotel. The closest thing we got happy with was a hotel. And we've just waited until someone came along of the caliber of this collision company. And I Googled them a little bit, and they're a pretty respectable company. I think I would bring my automobile there if I needed to have some work done on it. So I'm real happy with how it's going to turn out one day when my kids are driving around here and they're going to say, "Dad used to own that piece of property there. He did a good job with what he did with it." So I would appreciate your support, and thank you very much.
Well, your kids can say that about any street they're driving to Beaumont, right? Thank you, Mr. Pariji. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, sir, please. No. You're in the city council. You do whatever you want.
See any problems with the nursing home right behind the property?
So there is a nursing home just to the south. However, proposed as part of this design, I'll go ahead and jump to the site plan. They are proposing to do a landscape buffer to the south as well as a six-foot tall privacy fence, so that should mitigate the impact.
And by EPA requirements, they have to filter everything that's put out in the air. So that's given, and we will go through the engineering, I'm sure, and permitting. Any other questions or comments? Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the applicant and obviously Mr. Pariji, so I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the two conditions?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with the condition, and the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Madam Mayor, thank you very much. We're all yours to send us home. So we're good?
Mayor, can we ask a question? We're here on residential, nails salon opening tonight. Has the day on your, for your thought today to be heard?
Mr. Boone? I didn't see that on my paperwork here.
That item was pulled. I'm sorry. I didn't realize, I thought you were here for another item. I apologize.
No, no. It's at 3:00 right here today to be heard.
Yes, ma'am. The notices were sent out, and after the notices were sent out, the applicant requested to pull the item. So it was withdrawn. I'm sorry. I should have asked you, which I thought you were here for another item. I apologize.
Can you meet with her afterwards? Sure. Because the nail salon's open in our residential background. We're in the afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am. So the nail salon's already there?